They must have assumed, I'm assuming, they never assume anything, but I'm assuming that the fence lines that are there for everything is where they understood the property lines. And it was, from my understanding, it was tobacco land, which was all kind of merged by all the owners there, so I don't think they really had, you know, even stones at any of these corners, from what we understand. So anyway, when we did do the survey, our main reason for doing the survey was because of the pole barns, which you may or may not have heard of, have been deteriorated over the years, and we need to decide what to do with them, whether we're going to tear down any of them, or one of the things we're looking at is for feasibility, is extending the small barn that shows on the map in both directions, and our block pole barn is the one that's most deteriorated, so we're thinking of tearing down parts of that, and we'll go to Inland Wetlands soon on that issue, but, and we're not even sure if it's financially feasible to do that, but that's one of the reasons we did the survey. And so we discovered that a good portion of what we assumed was the fairgrounds is on town property, and probably what the town assumed was on fairgrounds, because they didn't know that this was their property apparently, because obviously when the boat launch was done, they didn't, they didn't change that, the boat launch survey was also based on just assessment maps, the best they could do, so. So anyway, this is what happened, and so then we thought we should be addressing this, because I don't think it's in the benefit of the town to have liability of us there. I imagine George can answer, but me, that we should have adverse possession rights to that, I would assume, because we've been using them since early 70s, I guess.
I don't think you can technically have adverse possession for town property.
Yeah, well, but anyway, I don't know, I don't know that we-
Speaking as the first elected.
But I guess we could continue to use that property based on the history.
But you are using land that we thought was yours, honestly.
Right, exactly, and we thought so too. So anyway, you know, and obviously I've talked to Susan, and this is what we came up with for proposal, the yellow area would be what the club would swap with the town, which is about, not quite an acre less than what we would, I'm sorry, we're the opposite, minus the opposite. The orange area is what the club would be giving to the town, and that is contiguous with your boat launch property. The, you know, just north of that, orange area is the boat launch property that goes to the river. I have the 1958 assessment map, if you want to see that too, which shows the river, which may be helpful in visualizing those. So anyway, that is what we're proposing, and we would gain, by deed anyway, close to an acre more than what we're giving. And also, what we thought we would do is deed, you, an easement, even though you really have a right to use our property, because you've been using it anyway to get to the Proust property before you, before the town owned it, for the boat launch property, it was owned by Proust, I believe, and they had access to get to their property from here over those years, so.
Although, when we, when we talked about the boat launch, which didn't happen, but we talked about it, Jim, as I recall, the club had said, there's a section of the mostly used road that we're talking about here, that we really didn't have a right to use for the public all the time, kind of thing. And that was a concern that never got fully vetted, because we didn't need to.
Yeah.
But what I'm seeing here is that the entire road that's used by the club and would be used by the town to access what used to be the Proust property, which we'd refer to as the boat launch property, we would have full access and easement over that entire piece to get north and then go left to go into our property.
Yes, correct. And that's, well, you own the portion from, the 1.79 acre portion, I can't even read that on paper, but what's yellow on here is you-
The town owns.
The town owns, so you have, you obviously have right now to get there, but you don't have, you don't have an easement or right to get through our gate and up to that.
Yeah, that was, that was something that never got resolved.
And nowhere here does that reflect, other than you said it, that's not what the diagram doesn't show, the easement continuing all the way out for the town?
Right, well, that's what we're proposing.
Okay.
We would, yeah, we didn't do an easement description, because we wanted to discuss the agreement first, and, you know, then we would have, assuming we come to some kind of agreement, then we would have a surveyor plot out that, and then do a land description of that.
And that club would maintain this road?
Yes, as we do now.
Well, the club's property and the easement agreement, you know, which will of course, you know, incorporate language, way, makes way there's a liability, things like that picture, so, but, yeah, I mean, that's kind of the beauty of doing this, it, in my opinion anyway, doesn't change the use of this property at all, it just more clearly identifies people's rights and liabilities, and it memorializes what was happening.
Right.
What happens in the future if the exchange club doesn't maintain the road and the town does set up a park to the left, are you putting the exchange club in a position that it's not going to do it? In other words, shouldn't the person using the road, like most, most times that there's an easement for a property, the person using it is the one that maintains it?
Well, absent language within an easement, the person who uses the easement has the right to maintain it, not an obligation, and the owner of the property has no obligation to the servant, user of the easement, other than to allow them access and to maintain it, not to improve it.
Okay, is that what's being proposed? I just want to make sure we're being clear, so everybody knows.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would typically expect to see in there, I don't think that the, the club would be putting themselves in a position to, you know, maintain the road for the benefit of the town, they're certainly going to maintain it for their own benefit, certainly will afford, you know, access, and, you know, I'm not in a position to say, so, I mean, certainly we could have discussions and put language in that would afford the town the ability to, you know, outside of maintaining it, to even improve it if their need was great, I don't know if there would be opposition to that, because that's not typically an inherent right, you know, that the user of an easement is truly-
How is this going to affect, obviously there's multiple property owners past this that do have the right to get to their land, maybe they can increase it, I don't know, don't care actually, but how is this going to affect them? Does there need to be language added for the other people, or is it, no?
No, and to be honest, I think we would be well to leave that silent, and, you know, unless the law applies, I just said, you know, that they will, you know, obviously we cannot do anything that would interfere with their rights to continue to use this, you know, easement area to access their properties, but I think we would be well to leave it silent as, as to, you know, our-
So, right now, right now you have a gate there, typically locked, or, you know, open when necessary. I guess when I look at this, I just, I know, we've certainly, you know, putting on my old parking rack hat here, and we've talked about the idea of putting the canoe and kayak, kayak launch off that piece of property that we already have. I'm just not sure how we handle, that would mean, right now, it's a piece of property that no one touches, but probably the exchange club and people wander onto it. If we're putting a launch over there, then there might be an increased traffic through that area, so I'm not sure what happens with regards to us having that locked gate.
Well, we would have to arrange for the town to have, have a key to that, and I assume that the town could open it whenever they want, they could control that however they want.
I think following your-
Yeah, but then-
Is this, could, sorry, if you have, so is, is, what happens if the town wants to leave the gate open? Is that going to be a problem for the exchange club? Because that's, obviously could become a reality, correct, Susan?
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going to ask, something to that effect. Like, if that gate was open, then couldn't, you know, just the general public sort of wander over into the exchange club side, and, you know, maybe exchange club wouldn't want them over there.
Well, we do have another gate, and-
Or a fence or something, or, but-
Well, there's a gate.
That's true, there is a gate in the back there.
Shows where our, when you, when you go up the road there, about the middle, there's a-
Yep, I see that gate, yeah.
There's a gate there, and there's fences, so.
Okay.
So, you know, I can bother the fairgrounds for-
As long as we can remember.
Since 1990, and there are many times when, when the gate has been open for lengthy periods of time. It's mostly closed because the four-wheelers and motorcycle people go down there and tear it up and ruin it.
And they go on the riverside?
Yeah.
And ruin, that's more the issue, I think, than even the exchange club, so I think the exchange club can probably cordon off most of its land, but it's getting in the back there and then going along the river, and there's been a great deal of erosion and terrible destruction of that area.
And there's state back there, Madison has a piece there, and then Wright's Farm owns a tremendous amount of property in that area. It's more a concern for them, but from the club's point of view, we, for our piece, we don't have, it definitely affects us if the gate is open. I think it's something the town wants to be, would be, want to be interested in not have it just open all the time, I would think.
If the town's rights of access would be really no different than they are right now, or certainly no lesser than what they enjoy.
Well, right now, arguably, they, they can't expand their use necessarily, so that's, it will change, because if we're now, if the exchange club is now giving an easement or whatever, there will be an increase, a legal increase, and they can potentially just let the entire town go through here and park in that field. Now they don't have that, I would argue, they probably, as a taxpayer, we probably don't have that to be able to go through the exchange club, other than for what was originally described as that right. We're expanding it.
I don't think it could, Ben.
Right, I think this-
You have to go in through the old Tryon area, technically, to access our land.
Right, this, this is a game changer for the town.
Club and the town.
This is the access the town has, where the Prousts have always used to that property.
For what that property's been used for.
That's right.
If the property in the future now is going to be expanded for a canoe launch, which has come up in this meeting, this new easement is going to allow them to increase their use, they probably potentially could not have increased their use prior.
Well, no, that would have to be a discussion, I mean, the easement would afford the town access to this property-
Oh.
-for purposes of access as, as it currently exists.
Okay, so then-
If you're going to expand upon that, then that's-
See, I, I remember, George, that the exchange club, when we approached the club, and I don't remember who we talked with at the time, they said, "Well, you know, you can use this part of the land that Jim's pointing out is in that yellowed area, but this small piece here," they were not going to allow us free access to keep going over and over and over, to have boats going through there. And they said, "That's something that they would really," they didn't say, "No," they didn't say, "Yes," they said, "We don't have an answer for you yet." And then because we didn't get the grant, because of the Puritan Tiger Beetle, we didn't proceed. But, so, if we have free easement, and it's clearly written in the, in the deeds, then it does expand, as you're saying.
Correct.
I believe. Now, you're saying we would have had access, and maybe if we had gone further, we would have found that.
You have access, you're a landlocked piece of property that has historically continuously been open and-
But you have another way of getting there, and that's through that old Tryon Street over by the river.
Correct.
And that's what the argument was, you don't have to use this, you can get there the other way.
But not to this portion?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, from, from last, from Tryon Street, yes. They can come in through the back.
Yeah, which does show on it, it shows on your assessment map.
It's a rough ride.
Well, why is that Jersey barrier there?
Yeah, well, you can move the Jersey barrier.
Yeah, so you technically could get it from-
Quite long, I assume that was-
That's what the club-
That was Tryon Street, I assume, in 1958.
Yes.
Which would be right here in Meadow Road.
Yes.
And that would allow us, Jim, to get to our acreage on the river, as well as the Proust property.
Right, but you'd be crossing Wright's Farm, LLC, or whatever it is, property to get there.
Right.
So arguably, that's where their, their right of way is, through the farm next door.
But if that's a town road, then-
If this map doesn't reflect it, you have to see that one, it shows, if you look to the left of the orange, it shows the old Tryon Street on Wright's Farm, not where the exchange club driveway is.
But does it go to this portion?
Yes, yes. See, closer to the river. So arguably, that's their legal right of way, right, Susan?
I think so.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the record, I don't care.
That's what I was told, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't-
Well, you're talking about the outbound properties.
For all the properties along the river there and north.
So I would argue whoever owns the Wright, the Wright Farm, they have, there's, the old road goes through, actually, there's my-
And they have to allow people to get to their property north of them.
Yes.
Because that is the only way to get there.
That's where those blocks are on Route 17, not where the exchange club gate is.
Right.
And that's where the landowners arguably have the right to go through.
That's what I was told, too.
So this, this way-
To stop the four-wheelers.
To keep people from going there.
To stop the four-wheelers, not the landowners.
Did we put them, the town put them up?
I don't know that.
Bob, we didn't put those up.
There's been, it's changed so many times, you know, how they've been put there, block access, especially when the town's been using it for fireworks for emergency access, that's the biggest thing, when you close that road on that side and change traffic for safety reasons, and people using those cutouts, so there's been blocks, and things put there over the years, and I'm quite sure of how, where they got them from. Those, like, it's a big piece of property, we put two gates out, so you can come in from any different direction you want, depending on what you're driving, but the gates and things are meant to stop your normal traffic.
And DEEP owns quite a bit of the land north as hunting areas, wildlife.
It's been a huge improvement since I've been responding to that location, in the form of emergencies, gates have done, new diligence, and they, I think, protected a lot of the area, and stopped some of the things that were happening before the response. The only access that we would be through those gates, which we have, was emergency access.
So does, I mean, do you see that on the map, George?
I'm still not seeing where Tryon Street access is.
Here, if you can put the map up here, and anybody that wants to see it, that way we're all on the same page.
Right, but Tryon was access to these parcels.
All the parcels, no, Tryon used to go to-
All the way to Glass Farm, right, but it accesses these parcels, not this parcel.
But isn't our, isn't, can I interrupt? I think the land that the town got, that's on the river, is contiguous to Proust.
Yes.
Correct. So if you entered the Tryon Street to access our property on the river, you could then take a right and go into Proust?
Yes, correct.
Yes, but the, but the rights you have over Tryon Street are to access, they, they don't necessarily expand, this is exactly what happened with the cell phone tower on the Quarry Ridge, they were, only, only Quarry Ridge had access over the driveway, not that self, that additional parcel that is ultimately-
Then why wouldn't, why wouldn't we have the right, since we own the land? If we can access our river frontage, to go on our own land, to go to our own land?
Right, and, and you do, but here's the example, just say this was privately owned property.
I get it now.
So I've got the right to go on Tryon Street to get to those parcels that are on the water.
That's the town owns now.
Right.
One parcel.
Now I buy the parcel behind it.
The Proust.
You know, that's 10 more acres, so now instead of being able to put five homes in, I can put 20 homes in. The access over Tryon is for the five homes. You know, you can't add to the back of it and then say, "My access is now expanded." You know, yes, in privately owned property, of course, if you own the front, you know, who's going to stop you then from stepping over onto another property? But, but the rights of access are-
Even though it's, it's an old paper road?
Well-
You know, that's not-
Has it been abandoned, or is it?
I, I don't know, I haven't done that research.
And arguably, well, I guess what you would need to know to answer this question is that second, the Proust piece, not the, I'll call it the river piece, so everybody, we have a river, the town has a river piece, and then has the Proust piece behind it. Did the Proust piece originally get access from Tryon, which I would argue it did, not the exchange club driveway?
I'm told that the Proust parcel that's always accessed by the exchange club.
We don't really know, because exchange club property wasn't there, so.
Right, well, right, why would, it wouldn't be, it would-
So we don't, we don't really-
That's what Jim said.
Okay.
But it's still, since the exchange club has owned it, that is access to Proust as well, so you do have an easement, or a right to that, whether, whether you have a legal document saying you do it, so you have ways in both ways.
Okay, that's a good thing.
For the Proust.
Right. And this piece that, that the exchange club is suggesting for this swap, a good part of that was, I think, owned by Earl and Melva Proust, which was donated to the town.
I think the entire thing.
The entire, is it the entire thing?
I think this is part of the parcel-
Yes, okay.
-donated by the-
I wasn't sure if up above also included Proust property.
That brings me to my next question, was there any-
I don't remember, I have to look it up.
Is there any problem in the swap, seeing that probably both sides were donated, one was donated to the town, one was donated to the exchange club, was there anything stipulation, like, can you, are you even allowed to?
Yeah, can you, can you redonate it or swap it off?
The exchange club deeds are reviewed, I know, and have no restrictions.
Okay.
We'd have to look at the Proust property, because I know, the one thing we were required to do is to put that monument, that statement that says, "In memory of Earl and Melva Proust." But I don't know if there was anything else. For example, to Ben's point, the property that we own, as you come off the bridge on the right-hand side, which was the Cashman House, and property that they donated to the town, when we looked at the potential of that being an access for the Elmcrest redevelopment, we were told, you'd have, you'd need an act of the legislature, because that was written such that it had to be in perpetuity for the enjoyment of people in the town, and they didn't, the powers that be, the lawyers and so forth, said that that really, using it for a private development would not be the permanent enjoyment of the townspeople, and you would be violating the trust that you have.
And-
So we, we can look up how it's-
Well, I mean, I can take a look at that, as I know the exchange club deeds were not-
It's important to look at.
Sure.
Um, Jim, so the, the road going through the exchange club in this yellow parcel, so this right now is, is technically the town's?
Yes, as well as this area on the inside of the fence.
Okay, this is all the town's, and, so basically, the town's going to give the exchange club the road and all this area?
Correct.
But the exchange club's going to grant the town an easement for this entire road?
Yes.
Okay. Because this doesn't do too much good for the town, it's got no, right, no real-
No real frontage, but the other, what it does do, though, it does, it is contiguous with your other-
Well, it does butt up with this, yeah, yeah.
So these-
And it's no use to the exchange club way over there, probably, right?
It gets you to the road, just to be clear, you might have access to that telephone pole by about a foot.
Yeah.
No, I'm serious.
Well-
That gets you, that gets you power, that's-
Oh, okay, okay, well, yeah.
In some worlds, that's a big deal.
But I mean, it doesn't really get you egress.
No, no.
Maybe somebody on a bicycle or something.
I see a telephone pole right there.
Yeah.
That, that was one of the questions that I had, is that obviously there's already a pole line that comes in, that probably has a primary feed, I would guess, coming in?
You're asking-
And I don't know, I don't know where the, I have to go and look and see where the transformers are.
Yeah, I don't remember.
But is that something in the easement, that if we did a canoe launch and wanted to put a single pole with a street light, for example, can the easement include the fact that we could take off the primary? You wouldn't be paying for the town's electricity, just instead of having two pole lines, which would look kind of lousy, if you're using a common pole line.
Well, I think you would have a right to, over our property, as the easement that would be drawn up, would be right to bring the televisions.
Yeah, I was just thinking, though, having two pole lines side by side never looks that great, if you have an existing pole line with primaries that you can tap off of, it just looks better, right? And it wouldn't cost you anything, because the cabling and all that is maintained by CLMP or EverSource.
EverSource.
And the bill would be ours, right, so not, no cost, just a right to not have to go and then pay for a secondary pole line and, and do that. Private property poles, once they're in the ground, if they fail, the CLP has to replace them, that cost has already been borne out years ago with those going there, so there's no net negative to the exchange club, it just saves having the cost. And then the second thought that I had here is that, again, I know you talked about the incremental use, I know there was some reticence and some concern that had to at least be evaluated, and this is going to be potentially a full-fledged boat launch with powerboats and, you know, state launch with a lot of traffic. If this ends up being more of a canoe and kayak type launch, you're talking about things that are going to be probably ported in on the roof of cars, or much lower use, would you anticipate any issue with that easement, including the ability to use it for that type of, that type of usage to the Proust property, if we built that kind of a launch? Because the traffic's going to be less, and, you know, you're not dealing with trailers, you're not dealing with that kind of a, you know, potential liability of people backing in, you know, those types of things. Because now that, I mean, that then provides sort of the mutual benefit of, you know, we both get the security of coming in on the easement, the town has an easier way to bring power in if we want to, we have the ability to actually develop this into a boat launch, and you end up with a much larger contiguous property that you have full rights over, so it's kind of a nice mutual, mutually beneficial in that case.
I only see one other problem. One of the light poles that the exchange club property uses, it would still be on the town's property. Light pole, it's titled nine point, well, number 34, isn't even on the, so that would have to be addressed.
I think- Which light pole, Ben?
Light pole 34.
I think it was-
It's off the property, isn't this?
Well, according to the drawing, it is, but maybe it isn't.
No, those are, this is-
Yeah, he's going to be accurate. But if we're going to work, if we're going to work an easement that's going to allow, you know, us to access this pole line as part of the easement with this property?
Yeah.
We can, you know, we could just make sure we work the, the same easement for a pole line, this and that, right? It's not-
Right, but it, what I'm getting at is, it should be addressed-
It has to be addressed, yeah.
-in the paperwork now, whatever, if that's what it was.
Absolutely, because this, this wasn't done on CAD, this is all hand-drawn, but, so that could just be a drawing here, but my understanding was, when he laid this out, was to incorporate the poles.
He got them all but the one.
Yeah.
And I can see what the intact was.
Well, I'm sure, if we, if we get, if, if we're going to go forward with this, we'll definitely finish it.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, we have to just clean that up.
And, you know, Ben, does the exchange club fully realize that it's, you will be increasing, you know, things will have to change on the exchange club's end as far as the gate?
Right.
As long as-
It's going to be used a lot more.
But I think, or not at all, they may take the gate out. Are you, is that going to be part of, I mean, think about it, if it becomes a public boat launch?
Yeah, they could take the gate out.
You, you could actually, though, if it's canoe and kayak, you would still, would probably want to leave a gate in for a seasonal, you'd probably still want to secure it, so you don't have people driving in there in the middle winter.
Probably move the gate further down.
You could also move the gate further down, yeah.
I will say, Jim, the diehards, they go year-round, until the river freezes.
Yeah.
But they, I mean, I have kayaked in the winter when we haven't had ice, and, so a lot, like, so.
But the gate discussion really ties, I mean, and you're right, now thinking about it, basically what you said is, you have fencing that pretty much covers the, the exchange club property, we have to be concerned about the access would allow people to get to other properties.
That's what I'm wondering.
It's probably not the exchange club, that's the problem, it's going to be the other properties we have to be concerned with.
I think that would be one of those concerns that we'd have to really look at, if we were going to actually build the launch, right? How would we include it in that kind of a-
But are we even there yet? If, if we're just giving that parcel an easement for access, arguably it's for their same access, possibly at this point, and then if they wanted to expand it, it would be a further discussion, I don't know, I've heard both tonight, so I don't know.
I actually, what I was talking about is that if we're going to do something like this, right, obviously the parcel that's coming over is almost an acre smaller, all right, so it is, but there's still the mutual, there's still a mutual benefit, benefit to both parties, if we end up with both parties right now, instead of having two pieces that we've been using by tradition, having a formal easement. So I see that, I would think that we should anticipate the use of doing a boat, a canoe we should anticipate the use of doing a boat, a canoe and kayak launch because that is, I think, one of the things that's being strongly looked at right now. That kind of additional usage, I think, should probably be discussed as part of the easement now, right? Not in two states.
That's fine. You know, and the town, even by gaining this little triangle, would have the ability prior to the gate to go in and out if.
Sure, if we wanted to build a second road and maybe have a second, you know, another gate that we would control, you know, there's possibly.
There's already that, it's not shown here. There's already another path right on this corner, correct?
Yeah, that's where the.
That is similar to this road.
During the fair, that's where the.
Oh, yeah.
And let's use the word.
Look around, look around property for parking.
And it's, it's right about here already. And I would use the word road loosely. I mean, these are, these are beaten paths.
Absolutely.
But, yeah, all, I think all of it should be discussed. I think the Exchange Club, you know, you guys hopefully gave us some thought and you know, I mean, if you're expanding that use and losing your, your, your way to lock it, it's going to affect everybody behind you. Because I can, I can assure you, those telephone poles and all those blocks were put there for a reason. I don't know if you can remember how the big trucks and the four-wheelers, I mean, it, this could potentially be a big inconvenience or if not a problem for all the landowners in the rear. So this is something we shouldn't just
No, no, agreed. And I think what, I think what we're looking at is if you have a gate here and there's a gate further up, right, we would have to look at, I think that while this isn't developed, I don't think anything changes gate-wise, right? But the potential is there for us to wanna have this unlocked, which means we would have to look at from where the fencing is, you know, how would we secure it in that back? How, how would we address that?
We'd wanna put a fence somewhere in there.
As part of the development. We'd have to, right, we're gonna have to figure out how we address that if we're gonna leave this unsecured so you don't expose that.
I don't even know if you could legally fence in the floodplain, but now.
I, I don't know. We'd have to look at how we address it, whether it's a fence or something, you know, something.
Maybe illegally, a lot of the boulders, I don't know. But, I mean, this is a major thing that, especially the other property owners in the rear, it could greatly affect them. I mean, it was a highway when I was growing up. It was.
I'll tell you something, I've spent some time north of Gildersleve Island, it still is. Even with everything locked and all this in here, if I'm sitting right now on my boat in north of Gildersleve Island, there's four-wheelers in there all the time. So all these, the mechanisms don't, you know.
Well, yeah, and we chase them off the rail trail.
Yeah, they, I've been hearing going up because I, my property, my personal property butts the, the head end for the rail, you know, and the Keegan property where the head end is. And, you know, I, I've had motorcycles coming flying out of there, too.
The four-wheelers and motorcycles, the damage is minimal. I mean, you get these big trucks back there, they're the ones that put the monster ruts in and, you know, the issues for the landowners, not the smaller ones, in my opinion. But as long as everybody knows what we're talking about here, I don't know how I, I think, I think there should be careful wording of this easement, but to protect both the town, you know, the town, now if we open this up, are we now liable for all these other guys? Because we've just opened up this road.
No.
You know, I just wanna be careful.
I know. And, I mean, I'm all for maintaining the integrity of the property out there. It's beautiful property. I ride a bike down there, so. But, but there's no obligation on the Exchange Club to, to maintain a gate out front there. That could come down tomorrow, whether we strike a deal, you know, or not. And, and, you know, I'm not, I, I would hope that would never happen. I mean, the Exchange Club, if we do have some type of arrangement, can secure their property, the town can secure theirs. But, but, you know, the obligation that the Exchange Club has right now is, is to allow people access over, over this road. I mean, so really, having the gate up is, is almost a burden.
Yeah, but who, who, who does the Exchange Club have obligations to? Tryon Street?
Or who the town does.
No, the Tryon Street was the access for the majority of the parcels in the rear, not here.
Okay, fine. So we have no obligations to anybody. There's no obligation to, to gate that, though, to keep people out.
Correct. But I'm saying, this increases the traffic. I just wanna.
Which nobody wants, but I'm just, I, I thought you were saying, you know, we've got an obligation.
Oh, no, 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 I don't think so. I'm just saying, look, hey, here's what's gonna happen. We should talk about it and everybody better be okay with what could happen. You know, that's all, that's my point. I don't really have a horse in the race here. It could go either way. It wouldn't affect me at all. But I just think everybody should be fully aware, this, this could be big changes for everybody that owns back there and not necessarily in a positive way. So I just wanna make sure we get it right. I don't wanna open up a can of worms that everybody's bad at the town, mad at the Exchange Club.
They can all secure behind.
I don't think they legally can. I would argue you can't put fences in the floodplain.
Gates.
Yeah, but you can put a gate further back in this triangle.
Not in the floodplain. Into what?
Like when you put a gate further back in here.
I mean, what are you gonna put it into? And when the water comes up, where's it gonna go?
Well, no, they don't want, they don't want fences because.
The spaces are now.
Your grandfathered in, but new fences they don't want in the floodplain because it stops debris from floating by and causes a big problem. That's the reason they don't want fences in floodplains. So.
They can wire it.
I, I, I don't know that. And then, you know, but whatever, I just, I'm just talking.
The fact that, right, that's potential.
Do, what do you wanna do, folks? What do you wanna do?
I want everybody to be comfortable. If the Exchange Club's comfortable, the town's comfortable, that's.
Do you want to put it on a future agenda?
I think we need to look at.
Yeah.
I mean, do you guys have a hundred percent comfort level on this easement and all that?
There's more worth in the long detail, but, right, there's merit. Principle of it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like the concept. I think it solves some potential issues for the town and I think it's a nice swap. I don't, I have no issue with that, but I just wanna make sure the easement's.
Listen, as, as, I look at it as we've got, we have more riverfrontage, right?
Yeah.
Than any other city and town.
Yeah.
And right now, the only public access is at the Portland Riverfront Park. This would actually allow people to put a boat in the water on public, I mean, that's, that's where I come from. It would actually give us some access.
So we, we have access through the Wright Farm on the old Tryon Street. That didn't go away. The town has the right to go right through the old Tryon Street. That right has never been extinguished, to my knowledge.
Waterfront property.
To the waterfront property. And I would argue the town could then access their own other parcel through Tryon legally. Nobody, you, there's no rule that says we couldn't access like.
It sounds like you're just moving the problem somewhere else.
George wasn't sure about that.
I'm quite sure about it. You cannot.
You cannot.
Expand the access.
Yeah.
So in other words, this would be the vehicle where we could expand access as part of the, with the limited use of, for example, a, a boat, a canoe and kayak launch. Because that would, that's something we could address potentially now with an agreement between the Exchange Club and the town. But what I think George is saying, if I was trying to listen carefully, is the old use, you couldn't necessarily do that. You wouldn't be able to expand it that way. You could only extend, expand it by a proactive agreement.
So wait a minute, George, you're saying you cannot expand use to that riverfront land via the Tryon Street?
Why not?
I'm just asking, I'm just.
Right, that's why I'm throwing in the.
I'm saying the Tryon Street, if it's an, if, first of all, it's not an abandoned road. Then it's a town road that people, you know, everybody has access to. If it's an abandoned road, the Butters continue to have a right to use that road to access their property. But to expand your property, liken it to, if I sell you a piece of property and give you a right-of-way, a ten-acre parcel, and give you a right-of-way over my front yard to get to your ten acres, you then, you know, and I know someday you're gonna subdivide it, put ten houses in. You've got a right-of-way over my property to do that. You then buy a twenty-acre parcel behind it, now you can put thirty of the houses in. I did not give you rights to access that use.
The other, the other parcel.
So while, yes, your parcels are contiguous and of course you can access yours and step onto your next, the intent of that right-of-way of the use does not necessarily give you the right to develop and continue that. And I think that's what's, you've got here. You've got two separate properties.
Does anybody have the assessor's map?
But we.
Does it have the?
First off, we don't know if it's an abandoned road.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. Well, what you need, when, when in doubt, you go by the assessor's map.
The Butters have, you know, continue to have the right.
Right, so I'm thinking this piece of riverfront land butts the road, you know. Tryon, try.
I think it may go through.
Be a lot easier with the Exchange.
I don't think it butts it. I think it goes through.
Well, it goes through it.
But the Prow property does not.
That's what I'm.
The Prow property is then.
Oh, it's removed from it.
I think, I think. I think it's east of it, but, you know.
Oh.
Yes, that's why I want.
We gotta go down.
Get more maps and understand the, the whole lay of the land as opposed to just, so we know what the issue is, we know what the question is.
Which makes sense.
And the Exchange Club definitely wants to own that road. As opposed to the opposite with the town giving an easement.
I'm sorry. Will there be no access to Seventeen?
If you gave them the easement, there would be. If they, if they, what Susan's saying, if I may.
Yes.
Instead of giving the Exchange Club the road and essentially the, the long-term liability to the Exchange Club, the town would not give the road, would just keep the road and then you would.
Shift that line over.
And then you would just get.
I didn't know if there was a reason for that.
Well, the reason was because, that's the discussion I have with the surveyor. I didn't hear the first part of that, so I'm sorry to interrupt. We originally, I was originally talking with the surveyor about just doing the fence line. Because what we were concerned about, I mean, that's where the truck pull areas and all that stuff and, you know.
The tractor pull.
Porch and other. And so, all we really need is the fence line. We don't have to have the road.
That westerly boundary could be.
Yeah, I, I don't want the town to continue owning the activity land.
I agree.
That is wrong. But the road is something I wanna think about.
Yes.
Whether the town wants to own the trail, let's call, let's not call it a road, let's call it the trail, as opposed to the club. So that's something I wanna think about.
Yeah, and we don't care either way. I'm sure of that because.
But where your activity is occurring is where you need to own that. Because I don't wanna be part of the truck.
You don't want the liability. Our thought was to take, was mostly because of Bob's predecessor, didn't want the, to have to worry about the road.
Okay.
So my thought was.
Right. I mean, I, I don't know. That's something for the selectmen to consider. I mean, the town's gonna be around a, a long time.
Yeah.
And the club may evolve. I don't know. May evolve. The town could sell.
The town may evolve.
The town may evolve.
The club's been around quite a while.
Except we're older. Right? Hundred seventy-sixth? How old are you, Exchange Club?
Since forty-six, I think.
Well, we were, nineteen forty-five, so.
Forty-five.
I can't do the math in my head anymore.
I think seventy-three.
Seventy-two.
Twenty-three.
But Susan, would the town end up then have more liability issues because we own the road, but, you know, in the?
Town has a lot of liabilities.
Well, it's true.
It's a town.
And to be honest, any line would you need an easement, if the Exchange Club would take that road and, and reserve an easement, we could pay an easement to the town, you would be assuming your liability for using it.
That's right.
You know, with an easement, that's right. Anyway, so I don't.
So that's not an issue?
You know.
Yeah, I mean, the big liability benefit to the town would be getting the activity areas off, right?
Right, we don't, we definitely don't want the activity.
You currently, you currently own the road or the trail.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I'm thinking to give that up, like, it's just something for us to.
Are you guys in a big hurry or, I don't wanna be the guy at railroad in this, but I wanna make sure.
No, I don't think there's a.
No, we're in no hurry, but.
It's recognition.
I'm just wondering what's gonna be the next step, is, you all have some concerns. You wanna get them down on paper promptly.
Yeah, I think you're right. And I think, I think, look at the assessor's maps. Each selectman can look at the assessor's map. There's a couple here tonight. You can certainly go in and see those maps. I'll leave them in the office. You can see them. And you may wanna talk with the Exchange Club a little bit more about it. The other thing is, I did send a note to Kerry Olson, the fact that four of us are members of the Exchange Club. So we, we've stated that on the record. And as such, if we were to recuse ourselves from the vote, you don't have a vote to send it. I think it'll go to a public hearing, it'll go to a town meeting. So the actual transaction would be approved by the town meeting. However, this board has to send it through those steps. And you have conflicts, potential conflicts of interest because we're members of the club.
It should, I don't know if it.
It could go to the ethics.
I hate spending money. I hate spending money on legal, but should we find out if Tryon Street was ever abandoned? That's a pretty easy one.
I'd like to learn more about Tryon Street.
Yeah, I, I have some information on that in the office.
Can we check to see if Tryon? Bob already left, but you have some information on?
There is some information.
You think it's still there?
Well, what do you mean, the road?
Yeah, well, I know the path is still there, but.
Yeah, well, I had looked into this because the, the further north piece, the piece where people live off of the road, had come in and asked questions. So we did some research on that. And what we found is the town had never declared it a town-approved road. That's all I found. So it is not an approved road.
Where's the last, the last piece of Tryon Street, north on the last.
There's no record of it. I'm not saying that by practice, we're not improving that road and so forth and so on. So there, there, that may be moot, but it's not legally there. I don't think.
Unless it was there prior to, when we, eighteen forty-one, is that the magic number?
Yes.
Yeah, so if it was there prior to that, it is accepted when the town became incorporated, regardless of whether we wanted it or not. And I'm, I'm willing to bet that road was there.
So, no, it's a farm road. It's gotta be, right?
That was the, yeah.
That was the way.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, Tryon Street, you're right, it goes all the way back up to Seventeen.
I guess for our purposes, at some point, we're gonna, we're gonna go forward with this, we're gonna wanna know what, how to, how to revise the map and descriptions. So we're gonna need to get clarity between.
I'm gonna put it on the agenda again for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I think is the seventeen.
Two weeks.
Seventeen. We'll put it back on. So if the selectmen in between that time could get some questions to the office, I'll be happy to share them.
And same with you guys, if you have any other two cents you wanna add. You know, George's doing a little more thinking and that's fine, just.
It's been a good discussion. I appreciate you coming in.
Whose map is this?
If you wanna have it, you can have it.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so I'll keep the two in the office. Moving right along. Next item, I put on the agenda so that you could give us some thoughts. I don't expect any action on those terms of education. We did have a citizen come, Mr. Connolly came last time and talked about things that we could do on Main Street. And I just wanted to share with you a few items in the fact that we are going to be improving the sidewalk on Main Street, as you know. I have some other information. But just to briefly tell you, I have additional information that I will share with you. I don't wanna read to you, so. But basically, there has been some improvements on Main Street. If you wanna proceed with additional, we have information on light, we have information on how we could improve our implementation of that ordinance. We have information on the fact that the sidewalks will be completed on Main Street because we have another grant that the state gave us through the connectivity. We can implement a conversation with the neighbors, which is something that Mr. Connolly had suggested.
I felt you looking at me.
Which is probably the, one of the first steps, and that is to simply talk with people about how they could improve, and we can help them improve the purification of our Main Street, all the way from the bridge to Route Seventeen. But there's certain pockets of those areas that are more congested, if you will, where there's more parking, where there are some abandoned, there's one abandoned gas station that has some contamination matters that need to be addressed. And then there's other concerns as well. So how do you wanna proceed is what I'm asking. Is there interest in doing what Mr. Connolly had presented to us? Luke?
I think that maybe a committee, a subcommittee, maybe Frank could share it. And instead And instead of having a heavy hand and heavy stick, have the subcommittee meet with maybe the owners of some of these properties and say, you know, one at a time, what do you think? And maybe a little at a time, some of these can be approved. I think the garage on Main Street, maybe if somebody talked to them, the owner's there. They can talk to him and say, you know, can you improve that property? Maybe know more about the piece of property. If there's, if it's a brown field, I know the tanks were removed. I'm not sure if the soil was removed. I'm not sure if it's clean. If it is clean, then that's fine. But maybe that's a discussion of a subcommittee, and then they can get back to us and tell us they were successful or unsuccessful.
Now, when you say subcommittee, you mean a committee of citizens, not a subcommittee of this board?
Right.
So, I could draft up a resolution that creates that committee? I'll point out that we do, when we, when we get to the dog park, 'cause I know there's some interest in that, I do have one citizen who has volunteered. So, when we get to that, maybe that'll spur some other people to get involved. But I'll draw up a similar resolution for this, and we'll bring it forward to you again. And I know that Lincoln White, our light official, will be coming with some information as well.
Going to our next meeting?
If you want it, the next meeting, I can ask him. Next available night. He would've come tonight, but I told him there was too much on the agenda. And I didn't, didn't have it specifically on here. So, I think perhaps next time might be...
Yeah, or the time after.
Okay.
Sometime within the year.
Yep.
Next month, too.
Okay. I will ask him. And Mary Dickerson also had some input and a summary of things that have happened thus far, some of which have been successful, some of which have not been successful, and some ideas about how we might proceed. And that could be helpful to the community. So, I'll put something together for next time.
Susan, when are they planning on doing the sidewalks in some of these areas? 'Cause one of Frank's comments was possibly shifting it. I would hate to see us put in all these new sidewalks and then make the decision after the fact to say, "Hey, why don't we move it out 30 feet so everybody has enough room to park their cars?" So, I'm just talking out loud here.
Right. There is a workshop that will occur within the next couple of months with the state of Connecticut for that grant, because they have specific requirements for all the towns that have been awarded that grant. So, we'll be going to that. I would not expect, Ben, that that would start on, the earliest would be the spring, summer of 19.
Okay.
Because of the stipulations of the grant.
Because a lot of the properties that Frank mentioned, they don't have the ability to park on the opposite side of the sidewalk currently. So, if we have the ability to shift the sidewalk 20 feet and then giving them the ability to at least park on the correct side of the sidewalk and beautify Main Street a little bit, I think that's a good idea.
Something to look at.
Yeah, I, hey, I thought it was a good idea.
Our biggest partner there would be the state of Connecticut, and what they would allow us as well.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, so we'll, I'll talk about that next time as well.
I really like it. I'd never thought of it.
Then we'll move on to the next item, which is proposed transfer station resource recovery fees. Whereas the schedule of fees for town services shall be set from time to time and a schedule of such fees filed with the town clerk's office. And whereas in accordance with Section 405.3 of the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen shall by ordinance fix the charges for services rendered by the town. And whereas the resource recovery operation has not had an increase since 2010. And whereas in accordance with Section 405.3 of the Town Charter, a public hearing was held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, October 3, 2018, at 6:00 PM, to provide residents the opportunity to comment both orally and in writing on the proposed fees for public works transfer station resource recovery rates effective November 1, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that the below-listed fees for public works resource recovery be and is hereby adopted. And you have them in front of you. And I would ask before they're read if there are any suggested changes to this schedule based on the public hearing that we had tonight. So, I'll open that up.
Sure. I think we had suggestions that, I think, all the comments centered around two items, which did not seem to be of significant impact when, when we had a brief discussion about it. One would be to keep the small bag fee at $1 versus raising it to 2. And the other was to keep the large bag fee at $5 versus raising it to 6.
Any other changes? Then I will read. Transfer station permit fee would go from $20 to $30. The small bags would remain at $1. The medium bags would remain at $4. The large bags would remain at $5. Antifreeze would go from $125 per gallon to $150 per gallon. The bulky waste would go from $120 per ton to $150 per ton. The freon would go from $15 to $20. The propane tank would go from $10 to $12. The tires for the car would go and remain to $5. The tires for trucks would remain at $15. And the new category entitled unacceptable mattresses for the MRC program would be listed at $30. And it should be noted that oil is no longer accepted and that we should see household hazardous waste collection. Is there a motion to approve that resolution as read?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. Discussion?
Possibly a friendly amendment. I just thought of it on the propane tanks. Shouldn't we limit the size in case somebody comes to drop off a 1,000-gallon tank?
What would the limit be?
What are those household ones?
Twenty-pounders?
Twenty-pound is a typical.
Twenty pounds?
Or...
Do they come bigger than?
They do.
You can get a 30.
You can even get a 100. A lot of people have those hundreds, but I don't know if the... I guess my question would've been, maybe, I shouldn't derail this. Is there a big increase in cost getting rid of it? Maybe cap it at, I would cap it at 100-pounders, 'cause those you do see on the back of people's houses and stuff. But I would cap it at 100, personally, whatever, you guys, whatever, comfort level.
I think he was referring, I had the impression he was referring to, like, kinda the...
Small ones?
The grill tanks.
Yeah, those are, those are, those are 20s.
And I've seen, and I've seen some of those at 30.
Yeah, yeah. But then on the back of a lot of people's houses, they have the 100s that they own.
They're kinda the cylinder that's...
Yeah, but it's a same dimension.
But I don't think, Ben, that that would be the appropriate price. I think the 30-pound would be the one that...
Okay.
That's where I was getting at.
So, Laura, we'll, we'll make that up to 30 pounds.
I didn't know if we, yes. I didn't know if we were selling the metal or not, but...
If there's a change needed, they'll...
Well, I don't think there's gonna be a lot up to 100 pounds. And if you, if somebody brought 'em, I think the person at the transfer station, they just work out on...
Can, can we legally amend this in the future, Susan, if we do see it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you go through the same process. We have a public hearing.
Oh, boy.
Or you can leave it with no, no restriction there.
So, you're saying what you're getting at, Ben, is we put it up to 30, then somebody comes with 100 and...
Right, my bigger, my bigger fear was the big buried tanks. Legally, I think somebody would have the right to come drop one of these off, and that might be a, might be a major burden to the town, and I wouldn't wanna see that, so...
Yeah, we don't want those.
Right.
If you wanna leave it at, up to 30 pounds as this price, and if we wanted to add another category, we could do that.
We could do that.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, why don't we...
I think we would just, we'd have to talk to Bob.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. 'Cause we may make money on it, too. I don't know if he has a company that takes them, so I don't, I don't wanna be the one derailing. I just don't, if there is a liability, I don't want it to be to the town.
So, what is your suggestion?
I'd say limited to 30 unless...
Yeah.
That's a friendly amendment. So, it's just an add to that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, Nancy. Thank you.
Take care, Ellen.
Okay, the next item is number 14, proposed water and sewer rate changes.
So, could I make my comment?
Yes.
So, you know, the comment that was made was that it's outrageous because it was 25% increase all those years, and we're talking about a 6% increase. Well, that's deceiving, because the cost that really reflected, when we talk about those numbers, are the MDC costs. And the MDC costs are only 40% of our budget, albeit it's the fastest-growing part of the budget.
Yes.
But it's only 40% of the budget. So, when you look at that, and you look at the 25%, 25% really translates to 10%. So, when you look at our 6% increase plus our increased connection fee, you almost hit that number. So, from that standpoint, we are addressing the increases that have occurred since, over that cycle, that had to be covered. So, that needs to just be corrected, because, and Jim could correct me if I'm misspeaking, but that is really what the numbers show.
No, that, I think, Ralph, that's, that's, it is, that's not 40%. It's about 40% of the budget. It changes a little bit as the water rates go up, because that is growing faster than other components. I think labor's growing, I think contractual 2%, right? So, those other components are less. The other thing to keep in mind is, when we looked at this, we looked at the actuals, I wanna say from the, you know, 2017 revenues. And we looked at our budget, budgeted expenditures in the current year. So, you really had a 4% from the time we looked at those two different numbers, a 4%. You know, there's been additional increases since the last time the rates went up. But in terms of looking at the actuals versus, I think it was a 4% and then a 13%. So, it wasn't, there was some question as to whether or not it really was a 21 or a 17%, depending on the timing of when those increases occurred. But either way, when we look at the numbers, this goes, these rates go a good way to, to take care of that deficit.
And again, just to reiterate, our focus on this first phase, and I say it's a phase, because that's what it is, was to really try to close the gap on our annual budget. We certainly did not lose sight of the debt that exists. We had lots of discussions about the debt. We talked a lot of numbers about the debt and when it potentially could roll off. But there are so many potential changes in the next year or two that it's really hard to really project out that far, because you're gonna have Elmcrest come in, you're gonna have a number of users added to the system, and who knows where the East Hampton discussion's gonna go? I hope in a very positive sense for us. But it certainly could totally change the game of what the situation is with regards to our MDC commitments.
And that was, and that was, and that was part of the strategy, right? As we look and, and that we talked about, is get the deficit closed. We know we have some growth that's coming on board. What we don't know is how fast it's gonna come on board and what the actual impact is gonna be. We can try to model that. We can try to estimate that. But by taking this approach, we're using what we, what we pretty much can know and forecast with some certainty. Try to get us to, we're in a good, a good position in terms of closing the deficits. And then we can really start attacking as we get better information about growth and those rates. Is that, Rick?
Yeah, Jim, I was gonna ask you, 'cause we had some discussion. And to kind of address what Norm said, it's really more than 6% over the, over the period, because when you factor in the...
The meter charge.
The meter charge.
The meter increase, exactly.
And somewhere in my notes, I had that, oh, here it was, that early on in our discussions, I think it was brought up, that, you know, water, water had to go up, like, at least 5% to 10% and sewer 10% to 15%. And when we factor in the meter charges and the increased usage charge P on the water and the sewer, we're not too, we're pretty much in that, in that range. So, you know, I don't think, I mean, Norm, I, I don't think we've ignored or haven't addressed some of the concerns, and I, and I, nothing's cast in stone. I mean, we're only, we're only talking here about an increase in January, an increase in July. I mean, if the numbers aren't working outright, we're obviously gonna come back and revisit it.
Right, and I, and I think the difficulty is, and this is why, you know, just talking in general about what we've done, it obviously, it's the mix, right? Depending on the users. The reason you do both components and make that adjustment is so that you're trying to somewhat spread out in an equitable fashion the increase. So, but it's hard, because depending on what the actual mix is, you know, how much usage somebody has, that changes the percent, the overall percent increase for that particular user. Every user's almost gonna have a little bit of an individual rate. And, you know, their own individual rate, because it's, they're gonna have a different mix of, you know, or a different ratio of usage to meter charge, right? So, that's why it's hard to discuss. But I think when we look at it overall, we know where we were on a deficit standpoint, and...
I think we do a good job of getting that.
And I think that we can't allow ourselves over two years without addressing rate increases on this, unless, you know, for some, or act of water goes down in price, but, you know, we don't, that's not very likely to happen.
There were two issues that also came up. One, Ben had mentioned something about the fire hydrants. And then I thought Mr. Walensky wanted to say something.
My answer, I said there, there've been a process of flushing the hydrants about now.
So, thank you, Phil. Ben?
I still believe on the hydrants, the general government should, that should get increased, because that's who would be paying it, essentially to all taxpayers. It should go from, what is it currently, 200?
200.
I think it should go to 250. I really do. And, you know, when you're talking about, I thought he said somewhere around 225 hydrants or something.
200, I think it's a 254.
Okay.
It's just over $50,000 now. And the increase that's proposed adds about $8,600 in the system.
That number doesn't add up.
200 times, 250 hydrants times 200 is $50,000 annually.
And then, but we're, I'm talking just the increase, 'cause currently...
Add to, to 35 times 250.
Exactly, so, yes.
It's like $8,600.
Exactly.
Right.
So, we'd be talking about a $10,000 increase more to general government if we went from the 35 to the 50.
It would be 12, 12,500, 'cause you're raising it in 25%, which is one of the reasons we went from 200 to 235, is that means that roughly the amount that we increased the meters, right? We pretty much used a very similar, other than getting them to an even-dollar amount, we used basically the same percentage across all the meter rates, and we did the same philosophy and rounded up on the hydrants.
And all of that's great, other than, and the reason I want us to increase it to that number is because I don't believe we've ever put enough money into the mains themselves or even a portion out of hydrant money. A lot of that isn't just in hydrant repair. Susan can tell you how much these things cost to change when we do them. They're, they're enormous.
You're right.
What we've never taken into, in my opinion, into, into account is there's a value to some of the piping. And I'm not saying, you know, all the piping by any means. Maybe it's a half a percent of the value of the piping repair. So, I personally believe it should go to 250. And that's my reasoning, because you're not just the hydrants, you're not just the hydrant repairs. There's a value to the piping, some portion. I don't, I'm not gonna be the guy to tell you that number, but I'm gonna tell you there's definitely a value, 'cause without all of the infrastructure, you don't get the hydrant. That's my point.
I can tell you that from a committee standpoint, I think we were very comfortable keeping the percentage consistent.
And I appreciate your ten meetings.
I can also, and I can also tell you that you're talking about a difference of, you know, 3,000 and change. So, it's not, you know, it's not a, about 4,000, I guess. It's not a huge difference to make that change. We also try to be sensitive that there are other investments that we're making in the infrastructure. So, we just, we can, we tried to be and have a consistent philosophy of why we did things. When people say, "Well, why did you adjust this?", we tried to be able to apply a consistent philosophy.
And while I don't disagree, Ben, with your thinking, the way this notice was put out was with the 235.
Okay.
So, I think we should contemplate that for the next change.
Right, there's a value.
'Cause I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you.
There's some data we could collect.
For consistency and the fact that we had a public hearing based on these numbers, I think we, we should consider keeping it consistent to the numbers that we put in.
And I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I think, and put the, put the message, I mean, the number could probably even go up even higher. The reality is, every resident in Portland, every business, whether you're on city water or city sewer in every home, you now have the ability to have your fire put out because of all these hydrants. There's a value. I believe the value is higher than the, than the 60...
And protection of your, of your schools, protection of these buildings and so forth and so on. So, as I said, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think if that is to be a consideration, we would need another public hearing on that matter.
Right.
And which we can do. But I think if, if we increase it consistent with what we put on tonight,
Yep.
then we can proceed with more changes going forward.
And I think that...
That sounds reasonable?
Yeah, I agree. And just my last comment. And I think, Ben, when we do do that, you may find that the number should be 100,000. That should be divided by all the taxpayers to keep it in a real number to protect the town, 'cause that's what it is. And then that's being more fair to the water users. That was my whole point. So, thank you. I thank you for your ten meetings.
So, is there a motion for the resolution and a waiving of the reading since, unless you want me to read it all?
No, I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Further discussion? I wanna thank everyone for their comments and also the committee's work. They put in hours and hours on this, I know. And I appreciate the work that our Water and Sewer Commission consistently has done for many years, as well as all those who commented tonight on the hearing. So, there's a motion that's been made and seconded. If you're ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is appointments to boards and commissions. And our Veterans Affairs Commission is here, chairman, right, Phil? And you had suggestions for two alternates to the Veterans Affairs Commission, is that right, though?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know I wrote down the names, so bear with me, 'cause I have to find them.
Rodney Spooner?
Rodney Spooner was one. Yep. Hold on. Yep. Well, there's, uh, is there a motion for Rodney Spooner?
Some would.
Seconded by Mike. Made by Ben.
Chris Rulow.
Chris Rulow was already on it.
Yeah, right.
What date did we meet?
I know you wrote it down.
I know, hold on. I know, hold on.
September 18?
Yes. Okay.
Oh, come on, Susan.
Okay. No pressure, please.
I was just gonna say, no pressure.
You're both guilty. You can't remember the guy's name.
Memory's a lot better than my memory.
Do you mind if we take a brief recess?
Not at all.
Okay, is there a motion to make a recess?
Some moved.
Seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So the motion was made and seconded for Rodney Spooner to be an alternate to the Veterans Affairs Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I would entertain a motion for Corianne Armstrong to be an alternate on the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Some moved. I'll second it.
Made by Ben, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And then I had one person who is very interested in the Dog Park. And her name is Ann Snell. Those are the options for Ann Snell to be on the Dog Park Committee. So moved by Mr. Pear.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye. Aye, but I, who was it? Who is it?
Ann Snell.
Ann Snell.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is the Dog Park Investigation Committee?
Something, oh my God, it's a--
Deep.
It's a park. Exploratory committee.
Exploratory.
Great name.
More than I had.
Okay.
There are a couple other people have talked about it, so I guess we gotta get formal with the other people then. Since I haven't--
But I thought that would be a good start. We voted? All in favor?
Aye.
No? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Are there any other appointments to boards and commissions? If there is not, Jim will proceed with refund of excess payments.
Sure. Make a motion to refund $30.09 Roger Baden.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $14 to Cynthia A. Rusick.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $18.46 to Leo G. Lemieux.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund $17.98 to Moran Diesel LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $46.12 to Stanley R. Unowitz.
Second.
I think it's Unit Kaywitz.
Unit Kaywitz, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund $35.06 to Neltie Duran Curly.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund $134.56 to William P. Donahue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $76.41 to Michael R. and Stephanie A. St. Peter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund $136.49 to JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund $24.30 to James B., I wanna say, Silaverto.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $660.81 to Donald F. McKenzie.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Clark?
With regards to the park, we've reconsidered, we're thinking about converting it to a water park. All right, I made a joke. Luckily, we've been able to, all the work they've done has been able to handle all flow of water, for the most part, that has come across the property, given that the drains are not fully connected yet, but it's been able to handle it. They've had to do some minor repairs to it. With regards to where they are right now, they're currently getting ready, and I think this, maybe tomorrow, they're going to, there's hills to north and east side, and they're going to be seeding those, hydroseeding those hills, so that they will be holding through the other rainstorms and snowstorms we get. So they'll be seeding the hills.
What kind of seeding did they put? Discussing which kind?
It was the--
The hydro seeding?
Contra, what's it called?
Contractor drain?
Nope, nope, nope.
It wasn't the wild mix, was it?
Well, it's that type of mix, but I'm trying to think of the term, the term is escaping me.
Conservation.
Yeah, that's the mix. That's the conservation mix.
So it'll be regular grass, or it'll be a combination of everything?
Well, it'll be a combination of things. But it's nothing that's gonna impede any use of the hill, like we've talked about. So they're gonna be seeding those hills, and they're currently, they spent the last couple days preparing the stone base upon which the wall that will be going across the east, I mean, the south and the southeast section of the park, and they're gonna plan to begin that work next week. So they're working hard to complete. I think they might, I think he said he thought they were gonna complete that, the stone preparation today. So.
Great. Thank you. Any other reports, Charlie? I'll make a brief report on the Brownstone Avenue project. We are still looking for prices for the pressure testing on that pipe. There is one company that's been contacted. Amy's looking at some other potential places, which she didn't have as of, I wanna say, Monday. So I got in touch with our fire marshal, and he was in touch with the state DEEP, and they think they may have a couple of other places to check into. So we'll get some prices on that. I'll make you aware of that once I get it. And then we do, as I indicated before, have a pretty good bid on the survey. So we just need to make sure we get the pressure test on to proceed.
We're gonna survey, what are we gonna survey?
The land.
Okay.
The land.
Okay.
Upon a successful pressure test.
Right, right.
Just, not to nitpick, but the email you sent out just said a pressure test. As long as we all know, it has to be a successful pressure test before we survey, is what I said in the original meeting.
Yes. Thank you. Yep.
I wasn't gonna email you that back, as long as we're all on the same page.
Now--
Yes.
Clean the pipe and took out the oil and cleaned the pipe. Did they kinda get the volume out? Did they?
Yes.
Saute?
Yes.
Okay. So the pressure test is kind of a, just to take it up an additional, to bear--
And I will point out that it is recommended by Buckeye Pipeline, that, you know, does this for a living. And they also pointed out that there's probably some residual product in there. They recommend that it be pigged as well.
Okay. Now, where are we at with who's paying for what?
We're not, we're not there.
Okay. Have you had any discussion with the--
I sent an email. The survey, I think, would be on us. That's part of closing costs.
Okay.
But the pressure test, I sent it to the seller, as well as our attorney, so that more conversation needs to occur on that.
Okay.
But I heard from this group that that's, that's very important for us to complete before we proceed. So I will let you know what has I know more.
I only have two questions. Number one, if you could find out what pressure the oil used to go through at, because then when you do the pressure test, that would tell you what you need to take it up to with an air test. For example, if they put the oil through at 60 PSI, you'd wanna pressure test it at whatever, 80. If they put it through at 100, you wanna pressure test it at 120. But obviously, somebody knows that answer.
I think Buckeye would, don't you?
Oh, without a doubt.
Yeah.
And then the second thing is, if they're recommending the pigging and we have to, I know there's a problem based on what I was reading with the, where the 10-inch pipe versus the 8-inch pipe.
Right.
But I think the 8-inch, the transfer from 10 to, down to 8, I believe, is, or the other way around, is outside of the ground on one end? Because that's a big deal, because the pigs are only one size. So they basically send the glorified buoy through that has all the mechanisms to clean the inside of the pipe, and if that's what has to be done. I just wanna know, is that a big deal if the, hopefully the flared ends are out of the ground? So I guess my question would be--
They are.
Is it all one size in the ground?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that I have heard that anyone knows that would definitively knows.
Okay. I don't know how you, like, the pressure test won't tell you that. I'm just thinking, like, but if both ends can be just cut off and it's all one size in the middle, great. So then the pig will be clean, done.
But we at least wanna know if there's any, anything in that pipe that would make it not a successful test. So that's what--
Yeah, the pressure test will tell us everything. It'll tell us whether it was leaking or not.
So as soon as I get more information, I will convey it to you.
One last, I did have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Are we still within our window of due diligence?
I think so, yeah. I thought we said 90 days from the cleaning of the pipe. Is that what you remember?
Yeah, it's, didn't like to remember, I think.
I think so.
All right. So, but we gotta keep this--
We gotta keep moving on it. And we are.
Okay.
And we are. Good point.
And is there a, is there a date, an expiration date on the price that we have? Or we have, do we have to worry about that price changing on--
For the survey?
For the survey, yes.
I have to ask.
We wanna make sure that if we've got a good price, then we take advantage of that.
Let me get you those answers. How about that?
Thank you.
They wanted to get going right away. I can tell you the survey.
It's easy. Let's get the pressure test right away, and then we're set.
Good point. Any other reports? Hi, beautiful ceremony. Thank you, Lou and company for the information and wonderful airline trip. Great, that was nice.
Thank you for the assertion. We appreciate that.
Susan, the other--
One's for you, too. Did I get it?
Sure.
Yes, Ben?
One of the things I would add is, the reason I asked on the pressure is if it's under 60 pounds, it can be bolted on versus welded.
Do you know of any companies that you could send?
I don't think that, I think hearing certain companies just don't want the liability in case they're pushing the leak.
That, right?
Yeah. In case they're pushing the leak out. But under 60 PSI, you can bolt on. Over 60 PSI has to be welded. Not that it's a big deal, but that's the difference, that's the threshold, give or take. So, but yeah, they're highly doable. All it is, from what I gathered, I checked afterwards, it's, it would take about four hours there and it's a regular big air compressor could do it, no problem.
What's an estimate of a cost for that?
I'm not the right guy, but I would say 5 to 10. 4 to 10. Is it welded, not welded, is it bolted on? Those, all those are very, all those are big differences.
Susan, are you looking for a company?
Well, there is one that was recommended that Amy is in contact with, and we were looking for two others. And what I said was I had asked our fire marshal and DEEP to help us with other names. The company, I don't remember the name, but they're in Providence. That was recommended by Henkel's and McCorr. Because we had asked them to do the test, and for liability purposes, they said they could not. But they would recommend this other company, and I'm just not recalling the name of it.
I can check out, I'm looking for the environmental cleanup company, I can ask them.
We also had a recommendation from a, the South District, Fire District in Middletown, and they had a name, because they oversee the Clean Energy Plan.
Yeah, okay.
But if you had another name, that would be helpful.
Well, no problem, tomorrow we'll see.
That'd be helpful. That's good. Doesn't hurt to ask.
Right.
Exactly. Yep.
Any other questions or any other matters on a status report? Couple comments? I'm gonna let Mr. Walensky go first.
Thank you.
No, go up to the microphone. He speaks.
Bill Walensky, 19 Rogers Road. I was, I couldn't get, get a, for the public comment on the, on the transportation fees, but I'm disappointed. All but two, I guess you've raised the price and you've taken away. You've taken away the oil disposal. Now, a couple months ago, I was in here, and morning, or commonly, anyway, I hope we don't have a problem with people dumping the oil down the stone drains. And God forbid, I hope it doesn't happen, but if it does happen, it won't surprise me a bit. I'm disappointed in that. I had talked to Bob Shea here a couple months ago about the flushing of the hydrants, because I don't know when, when the hydrant, the hydrants on my street were flushed. I don't, I don't remember. I've been in that house in 72, and I don't think they were ever flushed. Or, I shouldn't say for sure if they were checked or maintained or anything. But Bob, Bob now promised me in the fall that they were going to start the flushing and checking all the hydrants around town. So I'm glad, you know, I'm glad he's gonna be doing that. And I told him to give me a call when he's gonna be on my street. Either that, I said, now, give me a wrench, you know, I can do it myself, you know, as far as that goes. And so I'm glad now he's gonna be doing that.[1593.83] And so, I'm glad now he's going to be doing that. I talked to him before he had to leave. Elmcrest, that's-
Want an update?
That's the update. I know we're waiting for the state, you know, for the DOT. The last time I talked to you, so-
I talked to them today, Bill.
Yeah.
And they said that they're waiting for an answer for their questions that they sent to the developer on September 6. So, I called the transportation engineer that's working on the answers. He told me that they are being sent this week. He anticipates pretty simple answers, that's what he told me.
Yeah.
And they hope by the beginning of November that they will have the necessary answers from DOT or something.
Yeah.
They will start demolition on or about November 6, somewhere at the beginning of November, because they're going to take down a lot of the buildings, and they're going to have to remove some of the underground tanks and things of that nature.
Yeah.
And they anticipate starting construction March 15 of 19.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I remember when I was at the meet, meet meetings here with Bertram there, they said that they wanted us, they thought that they'd be in there with bulldozers and backhoes and everything in September.
But not without that DOT.
Yeah, so, so, so it's the DOT that told them this up. My surprise.
Well, the DOT has questions, they have to be answered, and they'll be proceeding.
Yeah. No surprise. And I see that, I see that was signed that down there, the lease.
Right. So, they're looking for retail, commercial trust to contact Atlantic Realty, which is the realty company that's managing the project.
Do you have any-
For rents and leases and things like that.
Do you have any inside info on, well, who he has? If anybody yet?
At this point, I don't have any inside information.
Okay. So, so as-
So, again, you're not going to, what he said, what he did say, because we had a lunch with him-
Yeah.
To try to get these answers, and he said they just really need to have the assurance from DOT. That's something that's very important.
Yeah, and then they can move on that, yeah. Will he keep, he, he keeping you informed as to-
That's my plan.
Renters who are-
Provided he can, once he has things signed.
Are coming in there, yeah, yeah.
Did you want Anthony Mike, or?
No, that was about that.
Yeah.
I don't think he has.
I don't think he has anybody yet.
Yeah, I don't think so.
It's like Sue said, it's popular hinging on the DOT, you know, to get all that done with, so, okay.
That's what I know.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Norm?
No, it's you, Norm, that's it. Norman Moore again. Just top of comments by order tonight on water rates. What I think we need to be a little careful on, we heard about maybe doing a hydrant maintenance fee, increasing it by $50. Now, that would have been a 25% increase, and that would be to the general taxpayer. We heard a lot of customers feel 6%, it's just way too high and unreasonable. But I think, once we explain, we haven't had an increase for three years, so we're talking a full year period here. And that 17% represented a $1.67 per month, or six cents a day increase. So, to me, that's not a burden on our water customers. Yes, it's an increase, but is it a financial burden when you don't, you expect them to pay $1.67 more per month, or six cents a day, and they haven't had an increase for almost three years? I don't think it would be an over tax on them. A 3% increase today on any utility is dirt cheap. It's almost not doing anything. We just went to a seminar last Monday, and that seminar on water has become a very precious commodity, and it's going to just get worse. That seminar brought out that we have to look at our water, substantability of our water. And everyone, we had experts in there, most on the board here was mirror, told us, everyone's experienced double-digit increases. It's just the way life is. So, we haven't had an increase for three years, and we proposed on up, we're rounding up, we're proposing 6%. We're not burdening our water customers, we have to realize how fortunate they are. We can't stop putting the burden of these increases on our general taxpayers. Now, hydrant maintenance at 25% is on our general taxpayer. We get no use, yes, we get fire protection, like Ben said. It's nothing to do with the amount of water, we got plenty of water. But we can't stop putting the high increases on our general taxpayers. We don't benefit the homeowners in town on their own septic system.